I will introduce you to motion to approve Resolution Number 3376 for reading.
Second.
For those who are following along at home, this is the annexation plan, so it's going to sound eerily similar and very long, so sit tight. Resolution Number 3367, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as the City of Salisbury Wastewater Treatment Plant Annexation, beginning for the same at a point being south forty-four degrees, forty-one minutes, zero seconds, at a distance of nine hundred and eighty-seven decimal one nine feet from an existing corner of the corporate limits line located along the southeastern line of Pemberton Drive near the northwesterly corner of lands of the City of Salisbury wastewater treatment plant baseball fields line of the Parsons Road X one comma one nine three comma six two two point eight four Y one nine three comma nine zero nine point two zero, thence continuing with the line of the said existing corporate limits, south forty-four degrees, forty-one minutes, zero seconds, east one thousand two hundred and twenty-three decimal five three feet to a point X one comma one nine four comma four eight zero point nine eight Y one nine three comma zero four one point five three, thence continuing with the line of said existing corporate limits, south fifty-two degrees, seventeen minutes, zero seconds, west two hundred and seventeen decimal seven three feet to a point at the easterly southeastern corner of the land of Value Enterprise LLC, being parcel one of Harbor Point subdivision X one comma one nine four comma nine three zero eight point seven five Y one nine two comma nine zero eight point three three, thence by and with the easterly line of said Value Enterprise LLC lands north forty-four degrees, thirty-seven minutes, zero seconds, west five hundred ninety-three decimal six four feet to a point at the southeastern corner of the lands of the USDA Farm Service Agency X one comma one nine three comma eight nine one point eight zero Y one nine three common three three zero point nine zero, thence by and with said USDA Farm Service Agency lands north forty-four degrees, twenty-seven minutes, forty-seven seconds, west six hundred and one decimal six zero feet to a point X one comma one nine three comma four seven zero point four one Y one nine three comma seven six zero point two six, thence continuing with the said USDA lands north forty-five degrees, thirty-nine minutes, forty-eight seconds, east two hundred and thirteen decimal one two feet to the point beginning, where as pursuant to the certain petition for annexation dated on January twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, attached here to is Exhibit One Incorporated for reference as a fully set forth herein, the City of Salisbury proposes the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as the City of Salisbury Wastewater Treatment Plant Annexation, beginning at a point on the south side but not binding upon Pemberton Drive and binding upon the existing corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, being at the northeastern most point of the affected property on the westerly line of the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the point of beginning, being all the real property identified as map zero zero three seven grid zero two zero two four parcel zero three six seven, and further being the same real property more particularly described in the property description attached here to as Exhibit Two and incorporated as a fully set forth herein, the aforementioned real property and here and after referred to as the property, and where as pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government four dash four one five, the City of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed annexation of the property, and where as pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government four dash four zero six, a public hearing on the resolution providing for the Council of the City of Salisbury approval of the annexation plan for the City of Salisbury annexation of the property as set forth herein shall be hereby scheduled for to be determined, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section one, the annexation plan for the City of Salisbury wastewater treatment plant annexation attached heretofore as Exhibit Three and incorporated as if fully set forth herein to be adopted hereby is adopted by the City of Salisbury's annexation of the property as contemplated by this resolution. Section two, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government four dash four zero six, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on this resolution on date to be determined, and the Council of the Council Chambers in the City Council Office Building located in one twenty-five North Division Street, and the City Administrator so calls a public notice of time and place of the said public hearing to be published, not fewer than two times, at no less than weekly intervals, and at least one newspaper of general circulation in the City of Salisbury, which said public notice shall specify a time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold their aforementioned public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than fifteen days after the final required date of publication as specified here above. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3376, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye. I will introduce you to motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3377 for reading.
We held, I think we had.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kitzro. We spared you one.
They messed us up.
Yes. All right. Moving forward to the public hearings portion of the agenda, anyone wishing to speak during either of the public hearings, please stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk. And those public hearings are ordinance number two nine zero eight, that's amending Section seventeen point one five zero point zero five zero A of the Salisbury City Code, deleting the word townhouses from category of uses, and ordinance number two nine zero nine, which is the to increase the inherent density for the development and redevelopment of property in the CBD Central Business District.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, they can come in. Okay. Do you only affirm or do you solemnly affirm or swear that the testimony you're about to be to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
This time, I will introduce you to motion and a second to approve ordinance number two nine zero eight for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number two nine zero eight, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Section seventeen point one five zero zero five zero A seven of the Salisbury City Code to delete the word townhouses from the category of uses permitted and parcel H of Planned Residential District Number Seven, the villages of Idlet Farm, and increase density to six units per acre. As Council President mentioned, this is before you for second reading as well as public hearing. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. The time is now eight oh eight PM. The public hearing for ordinance number two nine zero eight is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, please stand at this time. The time is now eight zero, the time is now eight oh nine PM. The public hearing for ordinance two nine zero eight is now closed. Boucher, are you okay with me proceeding forward without Councilwoman Jackson? Would you like me to?
I think we should wave.
All right. nine zero eight, and should we let Councilwoman Jackson hear the ordinance just one more time, just to make sure that we are? Councilwoman Jackson, did you hear the ordinance for two nine zero eight?
No.
Okay.
Would you like me to?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I apologize.
No, no worries. I just want to make sure.
So, Councilwoman Jackson, ordinance number two nine zero eight, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Section seventeen point one five zero point zero five zero A seven of the Salisbury City Code to delete the word townhouses from the category of uses permitted and parcel H of Planned Residential District Number Seven, the villages of Idlet Farm, and increase density to six units per acre. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading, and Council President opened it up for public comments, and there were none.
All those in favor of ordinance number two nine zero eight, please signify by saying aye.
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 I want to make sure we can, did you?
She said aye.
Okay. In hearing, unopposed, the Chair votes aye. This time, I will introduce you to motion and a second to approve ordinance number two nine zero nine for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Oh, Council President, point of clarification, I think in the existing rules, and I'm not saying it's an issue tonight, it is an issue, you're not allowed to participate in a meeting if you're not physically here, is it? That's correct.
In the, in the form.
In the current rules, it doesn't address that. And then for those rules, you could participate, provided your video was on.
I think it, I think it does address, it specifically says you cannot participate in a rule unless you're physically present.
And.
You can, you can listen in, but you just can't participate.
We've, we've.
I'm not saying we haven't done that, I'm just saying I'm not sure they follow the rules. It shocked me, too.
Yes, since COVID, I think we've been allowing individuals to attend remote.
That's a different item, allowing it, but is the part of the rules is where I'm coming from.
Well, likewise, the rules state in public comment, it's only three minutes, and we've allowed four. There's a lot of provisions and rules that we follow, and we also don't follow, which is why we've been trying to amend them.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just point of clarification, I was just, I just had, because I was reading the, the rules side by side, I was like, well, that's interesting, I never realized that was the case, but I know there have been a number of times when people, you know, have been absent, so.
I'm, I'm sorry.
So, point of clarification.
Okay. Did we have a motion, and was that seconded?
It was seconded.
Okay. So ordinance number two nine zero nine, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Section seventeen point two four point zero four zero to increase the inherent density permitted for the development and redevelopment of properly located in the Central Business Zoning District. This is also before you for second hearing. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading, and so at this point, we can open up for the public comment or public testimony.
The time is now eight thirteen PM. The public hearing for ordinance two nine zero nine is now open. Those wishing to, okay, if you want to.
I thought every rule was just going to be. Here we go.
Not using the list, sir.
Public comment, I don't think has a lot.
This is a public hearing, it's a no, just given the Open Meetings Act, we're following, we're following that, and thank you.
Do I have three minutes? Hello, everyone. I'm Molly Heligoss. I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, and I live in the City of Salisbury. The counsel, you've already received and probably read the letter of support from Habitat for Humanity in support of the text, the text amendment for increased density. What you may not be, what you may not realize is that the Maryland Department of Planning is projecting household counts in Wycomico County to increase to forty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five in the next five years. So the City of Salisbury has the most capacity of the water and sewer connections compared to any other municipality in Wycomico County. Fruitland has a little bit of capacity left, and perhaps Delmar, but the other municipalities have aging systems that cannot accommodate new subdivisions or multifamily. This means that developers need to build four hundred and ninety-five units per year, according to the Maryland Department of Planning, just to keep up with the household population projections for Salisbury. Density is absolutely the answer. Further, and you guys can take a look in the Metropolitan Magazine that just came out, quote, "By 2028, Title Health anticipates becoming the third-largest single-site GME program in Maryland, hosting more than two hundred residents, residents or doctors, and fellows, also doctors, across twenty-nine programs." Where will these residents and their families live when we already have waiting lists for existing apartment complexes? Again, this is another reason why the density text amendment doesn't just make sense, it's going to be a game changer for our region. Elected officials, you have the power to bring specialists to Title Health, God knows we need them. I mean, I've lost my, my primary doctor already to retirement, and two gynecologists in ten years to retirement. These doctors and all the ancillary medical professionals, they need a place to live in order to move here for these exciting programs. Look forward to your support of the amendment.
Jovanosa, City of Salisbury. Again, as a citizen who has a family, who pays taxes in this community, I agree that we need more density, fully. And for the record, I'm not a landlord, nor a developer, just a regular Joe. Be the handsome one. Now, the, the issue here is that unfortunately, this density amendment, at its core, is really a subsidy for certain developers. Today, we run the risk of watching our city government, our city government, ram through a density amendment that at its core is a giveaway to a local developer whose corporation will receive an initial, I believe, five-year tax abatement for development project costs, and a full twenty-year abatement on tax revenue, while our largely impoverished residents now have to pay for the increased infrastructure and service costs associated with this project through higher rents and higher taxes. In a closed-door city council meeting from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, that's the one that citizens are able to get, multiple city council members admitted behind the scenes, but on record, that these new luxury apartments would, quote, "not be available to most people in the community," and would not address the housing affordability crisis. So anyone telling you this is about housing affordability or homelessness, complete misinformation. This is simply a gentrification project that is being papered over with feel-good language and gaslighting by the public. At this very moment, just a few hundred feet from this building, we have people sleeping under bridges and in alleyways. We have families struggling to pay rent and basic amenities. We have one of the highest rates of racial and economic segregation in the state of Maryland. But we have a city council that right now might pass a piece of legislation that will make all those challenges worse by subsidizing the promises of the elite developers on the backs of the working class and the poor. This density change is simply our own local version of the two thousand and eight Wall Street Bank bailouts. It's welfare for the rich and empty promises for the working class, folks. Please stand for the people of Salisbury, not for the bank accounts of Gillis Gilkerson and their enablers at the Greater Salisbury Committee. Thank you.
I thought that was my cue. My name is Joey Gilkerson, Gillis Gilkerson. Council, thank you for your time. I really appreciate your public service and certainly do not envy your position. My name is Joey Gilkerson. I'm a business owner, a developer, a husband, a father, and a son in this beautiful city. I've lived nearly every day of my working life in downtown Salisbury. I fully support dense downtown development. Land is a finite resource. I've heard the age-old saying of buy land, they aren't making any more of it more times than I can count. We are in a housing crisis in our town. If we don't build up, we must build out. That means tearing up more farmland, that means tearing up more hunting land, that means stretching out more roads for our county and city to pay for, that means miles upon miles of additional water and sewer pipe that we must maintain, and a very relevant recent example of more roads to snowplow. We're right on top of that these days. Real estate developers and governments are charged with thinking about not only the present but the future. Building a denser downtown saves money in all sectors of public infrastructure and increases property tax revenues. Density is being opposed by a few small groups serving their own special interests. They aren't interested in what is best for our community. Some want to keep their rents high, some are looking for more views on their podcasts, and most have no interest in our downtown's success. Parking has been a highly discussed item, and just as a reminder, parking studies have been completed. The garage that the city will own on a land that they already own will satisfy the demand. Downtown is a parking district, and Salisbury has been in the parking business longer than I have been alive. We will rent from the City of Salisbury the number of spaces that we need, as other businesses and visitors will do the same. When we think about the community at large, the answer is obvious. Increased density is best for our community, not just our downtown, although it is best for our downtown, but the future housing and financial needs of our community at large. Thank you for your time.
James Yamakawa, Fruitland, speaking as Chair of Housing and Economic Development Committee for the Wycomico NAACP. After reviewing arguments both for and against ordinance two nine oh nine, our chapter's official stance is that we tentatively support this change. It is widely understood that our community is in desperate need of more available housing, and while imperfect, this would be a small step in that direction. However, we have our concerns, and our support is entirely conditional. What guarantees are there that any of this new housing will be affordable? Yes, the argument is that the more housing we build, the more supply there will be, and therefore prices will come down, but how likely is that to happen in reality? How would the city deal with current landlords and property managers who choose personal profit over the public good? Our chapter regularly feels complaints over discrimination and unsafe living conditions, and while we anticipate the future, we must also focus on the needs of the present. And while much of the focus has been in the downtown area, Salisbury as a community exists beyond the boundaries of the Central Business District. Historically, disenfranchised areas such as the West Side deserve at least the amount of attention that downtown gets. Add to that, while proponents of this ordinance point out that this has nothing to do with gentrification, history shows us otherwise. On the far east side of the CBD, lot number ten was sold to a developer to build a hotel and conference center. Whether that actually happens or not, that parking lot used to be a thriving black community, which was systematically targeted for destruction. As well, on the east side of the CBD is an area that abuts the neighborhoods of Fitzwater Street, slated for development as well. West safeguards will be in place to protect residents currently living there. As a final note, Wycomico NAACP formally invites the mayor and city council president, or their representative, to attend our monthly general membership meetings to give us regular updates on how the city is working towards both sufficient affordable housing as well as equitable economic development. We will, of course, be providing you with offices with information about those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Jared Chablain, resident of downtown Salisbury at the Powell Building. As we enter a new year, the housing crisis looms large as one of the more urgent and personal challenges we face. This isn't just a national issue, it's happening right here in Salisbury, and the future of our community depends on what happens next with the density amendment. Right now, powerful landlords and their allies are working to block new housing by charging rents so high that many people can't afford to live here. Across the country, this same troubling pattern is leaving countless young people without the resources to strike it out on their own. Consider this, and this was just in MSNBC this, CNBC this week, forty-five percent of people aged eighteen to twenty-nine live at home with their parents. This is the highest rate since World War II. Over the past two years, more than sixty percent of Gen Z and millennials have had to move back home because of skyrocket housing crisis. This crisis is strangling opportunity and independence for an entire generation. I count myself as a lucky one. I live alone downtown Salisbury, thanks to downtown development like the Powell Building. Without this progress, I would likely still be living at home with my parents. That's why I'm speaking up today in support of the dimensity, density amendment. Everyone deserves the chance to live independently, build their future, and thrive. But this isn't just about housing units, it's about people. It's whether your kids and grandkids can afford to stay here or be forced to move far away. Sussex is even farther away than that. It's about whether Salisbury will continue to face shortages of doctors, nurses, and teachers because they can't afford to live here and there's no housing here. If we don't act, wealthy interests and their allies will keep manipulating the housing market, putting working families in impossible situations. Salisbury deserves leadership that puts people before profits. It's time to pass the housing, uh, density amendment, build more housing, and create a future where everyone has the opportunity to succeed right here at home. I urge this body to pass the density amendment and put the needs of Salisbury families ahead of landlord profits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Boland, and I am also a resident of downtown Salisbury. I am a lifelong resident and a teacher here in Salisbury. I wanted to speak tonight to show the community that there is more than the elite developers who support this density amendment. It is also the everyday worker. The proposed density amendment, in my opinion, is extremely beneficial for Salisbury. It offers the opportunity to bring more attainable, modern housing to downtown. That housing will be a boon for hard-working residents like me, people who contribute to our schools, our businesses, and our cities, sorry, our cities' economy as a whole. I am extremely lucky to already live downtown, but I am telling you I wouldn't be able to if I didn't also have my fiance's income. That should not be the case. A single person with an average job should be able to afford to live here in downtown Salisbury. And I don't have to tell you, as a teacher, we need more workers here in Salisbury. This amendment isn't just about housing, it's about building a thriving Salisbury. With more homes downtown, our local businesses will flourish, our neighborhoods will grow vibrant, and families will have the stability they deserve. Once again, as a teacher, I see families having to move constantly because of the cost of living, and I don't want to see it anymore. I want to see them be able to stay here in Salisbury and build our city up and build our community up. I urge you to approve the density amendment. It's time to put our community first and make Salisbury a place where we can all afford to live, work, and thrive together. Thank you.
Thank you.
You already know my name. I came up in the elevator this evening with a guy and asked me what did I come for, and I said I was on my way, so I decided to drop by. It got amazing that he sends you where you need to be at the right time you need to be there. To the gentleman that spoke about people losing their housing because of downtown, that's my family. The middle of Route Fifty was where my grandmother's house was when you all decided you all wanted to develop it and moved us down Jersey Road. Oh, wait a minute, you also moved the gravesite by what Arby's is across from Wide Mill. Half of the peo, I'm just speaking, I'm looking this. Baby, don't worry, my eyes only go forward. Half of the funeral, the graveyard is by Arby's. The other half was divided into two sections, one on Division Street and the one on West Road. Since when you plowed up all of our family's graves, tore down our houses, you put them in one big hole and covered it up. I take that to what you're doing now about housing. There is nobody with an average job making fifteen dollars a week can afford a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, townhouse, building brick or stone. That is impossible. That is just impossible. I work with poor people, not poor in spirit, poor without money. On West Road, there is houses now that were there when I was a child, that they're now charging eleven hundred dollars for a brick place that used to have outdoor water, outdoor bathrooms only. The only thing you did to increase it, the developers, people that own, so I'm not looking at you because you were probably too young, I'm seventy-four.
I want more.
So let me educate you. They put a bathroom in the space where the living room was and put a pump, every five houses had one pump. So who, who wins? The average person and the poor person doesn't win. You guys don't live in Salisbury, you live somewhere else out in the country. When will we get the idea that everybody deserves a good life and not have to? I buy the land, my son may save money to build a house, my grandson will then be able to take that money and build a house, when other people in town just build a house. It also increases crime, I'm gonna get to my eight seconds. Our children are seeing everybody having rich cards, this and that, and all of the other things in life, while they are working for minimum wage. How is that fair when you all keep making more and we are receiving less?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Turner. I am not a city resident, but I live on Douglas Road just outside the city lines. In the fifty-four years that I've lived here, I've owned numerous home and business properties within the city and have paid city taxes without benefit of representation for most of those years. I'm here tonight in to response into what appears to be an ethical degradation of this body. I may not have the details, but I can tell when something smells. The issue we're talking about right now, density is an economic issue, is what I'm here to speak about. If developers want to develop and want to have that density, my question would be, why are the taxpayers paying for that? Why are there not parking requirements? Public servants who are serving the public have no need to enact last-minute rules that disavow the speaking of their names and to say that these rules are for security reasons. Could it perhaps be because some of these actions may not be in concert with the oath that they took to the city? Have ethics and morality gone out of fashion? You all were tasked with serving the best interests of your constituents. How is selling off all these parking lots at ludicrous prices and awarding double-density sweetheart deals to private concerns at taxpayers' expenses fulfilling that preference? Vinyl-sided, double-density apartment buildings, brick parking garage, huge city expense, long-term tax abatements, none of this helps our city or the taxpayers. The city is going to take on this financial loss. I have no problem with the fact that we need more housing, that's not the issue. Community leaders have an obligation to set an example, and loyalty to your day job and your business associates does not negate your obligation to the city. Some of today's business practices lead to graphs that might encourage businesspeople to justify unscrupulous practices without accountability, and it's wrong. I was in business, I understand temptation, but this isn't who we want to be, is it? And if you do want to do these, pay your way. Provide your parking. Selling off parking lots for a dollar that somebody else is going to make money out? Without- I can tell you right now, I know a lot of city people who had no idea that all those parking lots were sold off. And so that's the issue, it's not the double density, it's pay your own way so that the city doesn't have to. Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Taylor again, long-term, fifty-year-plus Salisbury resident. Ninety percent of that time, I had an office about a block over that way. That last speaker hit the nail right on the head. I agree with what she said, and I urge you to not pass this change. We've already got density downtown, we got forty units per acre, and that's with no on-site parking. The lady asked how it got that way? Ask Jake Day, he's the one that got the former council to take it out of the code because the deal that they made with Devrecce down in 2015 wasn't going anywhere. That's had to have parking then, they made that in 2015 for two of those lots. I know I'm not going to talk those of you who have made your mind up on this to change your position, but I will add a few facts on the matter. Ms. Hilleghis, anybody that believes data from the Maryland Department of Planning is- they've been predicting overpopulation in Wycomico County for fifty years. If you go back and look at their data from twenty years ago, it was going to be a hundred-and-fifty-thousand now. I mean, it's just ridiculous. Now, as far as the hospital is concerned, and I really like the idea of what they're proposing, street talk and its common knowledge is they're going to build on the old Daily Times property. They got plenty of space there, and that can be zoned specially to give them more than forty units per acre. And for that matter, these guys that want to do the Salisbury Town Center apartments, with the density they got now, they can do a little over a hundred rather than the two-twenty that they want you to allow them to have. So when you start looking all at this in perspective, what is being proposed and what they ran through the Planning and Zoning Commission, which incidentally, four of the members of that are either past or former members of the Greater Salisbury Committee, and I see their chief lobbyist is here in the front row, I'm sure he'll be speaking. So, I mean, this is absurd, it really is. Now, the mayor's getting a traffic and parking study done. Let's wait and get the study, and let's really get some real information here. And by the way, I sent you an email today. Let's change the code and take out the part that says you can have your density increased by a special exception. That's the circuit court held that that's against Maryland law. Now, you can use a variance for that, and they could have asked for a variance, but they didn't do it. So, I mean, this whole thing is really ridiculous. Let's stop the train and get it back on the tracks. Thank you.
Joe Sciofino, Pinehurst neighborhood. We've heard arguments pro and con. I have no opposition to a density increase. What I'm opposed to is the process, where we're going. We had the Salisbury Department of Infrastructure and Development had a lot of concerns, they were ignored by the Zoning and Planning Commission, and from what I saw at last month's meeting, they were ignored by this council, there was no discussion. I'm glad to hear that there's a traffic impact study and a parking study being done. And again, I saw the pictures of the plan, they're beautiful, they'd be an asset to the downtown as long as they conform to what our traffic impact study and the parking study says. And if it says density should only be, we can comfortably handle sixty, then that's what we should do. So I would ask the council to table this tonight until we get the results of these studies, and we'll have a better handle on working with the developers and getting this project moving. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Wogamith. I'm a city resident, a city taxpayer. I am not a landlord, and I strongly oppose ordinance 2909 for the following reasons. The city's own Department of Infrastructure and Development, in their ten-page staff report concluded, quote, "Staff cannot support the current text amendment," unquote. That's huge, you should listen to them. This is what they do for a living. The developer requested this text amendment as an end runaround denial of his request for a density exception by the Salisbury Board of Appeals, as well as the circuit court's denial of their appeal of that decision. This text amendment will change the density not only for this applicant, but for the entire The applicant presented no testimony to support this amendment beyond the fact that he wants it for his project and he should get it. The P&amp;Z Commission's initial approval of the applicant's project waived a community impact statement, waived a letter of financial capability, and neglected to forward a recommendation regarding parking to the city council. Lack of parking in the CBD is a huge concern, especially with the anticipated construction of Salisbury University's Performing Arts Center and its one-thousand-seat theater. Lack of a community impact statement results in a huge unknown when planning for fire and police protection, schools, roads, and stormwater management, that are all a vital concern when considering doubling density in the CBD. Costs to city taxpayers to provide vital services and parking in the CBD has yet to be determined. The city's Horizon program provides the developer five years of complete tax abatement and then an additional fifteen years of partial abatement. City Council's July 31, 2024, letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission stated, "The city council's support for the proposed text amendment." That was a violation of the Maryland Open Meetings Act. Is this public hearing merely a box-checking exercise? Since the council has already made its decision, they made it and sent it to the Planning Commission at the end of July. Lastly, City Council President Doherty, by virtue of his employment as development manager of Green Street Housing, should recuse himself from this vote as his employer stands to benefit from this text amendment increase in density. He should have recused himself during the P&amp;Z discussion and vote on it, and he should have recused himself when there was discussion in this council.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. Downtown housing does not tend to be affordable. It's vertical construction. In order to achieve the kind of densities that are desired, you're building up. When you go up, it costs more. It's a fool's errand to believe that this is going to generate affordable housing to resolve the housing problem that we have. As others have stated, the recommendations of the Department of Infrastructure and Development have simply been ignored. The Board of Appeals previously turned down the density increase. The problems that have been pointed out are that this increased density will be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. There is grossly inadequate parking. The parking studies and the traffic studies have not been completed, they need to be completed, we're putting the cart before the horse. It's going to put excessive stress on emergency services, massive upgrades to an aging water and sewer system that will cause massive traffic disruptions. Stormwater management and drainage needs are undetermined, there's inadequate schools and parks, impacts to surrounding neighborhoods, and significant environmental impacts insofar as the CBD lies within the Chesapeake Bay critical area. This all seems to be done, is desired to be done, on the premise that it will increase affordable housing. It will not, but it will benefit the developers, you know, very nicely. We are not subjects of the developers in this town, nor are we subjects of the Greater Salisbury Committee. This is a reckless act, y'all haven't done your homework to be able to approve this. Let's get the homework done, let's do the studies, and then revisit this. I have difficulty foreseeing a doubling of the density, though. I think many people misunderstand the nature of the city of Salisbury and Wycomico County. This is a rural county. The people who want to live downtown are generally going to be young urban professionals. It is not an environment that families want to move to, they want space. They're going to want to be in a more suburban type of setting. So the demand for this expensive housing downtown, I think is going to be a heck of a lot more limited than y'all think. That's all I got, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Monica Brooks, and I, while I am president of Wycomico County NAACP, I had my housing chair speak our stance on that, but as a business owner in the city of Salisbury, I did want to just kind of have a different take on addition to what the conversation is saying. I would like to see the city ensure more diversity in not only its building projects, but its builders within the city. And to verify when contracts come forth through the city, what means are taking place that these developers and builders are actually utilizing diversity in their subcontractors and people who are doing the work. Far too often, we see the same old same-o, same old same-o in people that receive some of these contracts. But we would like to see the city do a more targeted outreach to ensure opportunities are spread throughout to as many different, and it's not just BIPOC people of color, but other entities as well, but more targeted outreach to ensure that not only is everyone given equal access to some of these opportunities, but also that the people who are doing the work are utilizing people of color or underrepresented entities in the work that's being done. I think that's something that has not been shown, and certainly, we know that the city of Salisbury in itself and its population of employees is already ninety percent, at least eighty to ninety percent, white. So the point is, bringing that point up is to say that sometimes people don't see who's missing because they're not used to seeing something different. So I just want to encourage the city to just take a look at that perspective, to see how they're faring in their diversity and offerings of positions and jobs and subs as well. Thanks.
Sharon Lloyd, Salisbury man, forty-one years. I certainly didn't want to be here for the first comment, I certainly don't want to be here for this one, but I feel that it's very important. I beg you to deny, reject, or at least table this. We're talking about our downtown. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the fact that people call Salisbury the little Baltimore. Why? Because of the violence, shootings, stabbings, fights, and I'm sure the police can verify every bit of that, you know, or even look it up on the website. For developers to come in here and want to do this is nothing more than greed. If you were my son, I could tell you if I'd smack you right across the face. It's selfish, it's greed. Selfish, greed. Affordable, and another thing you said was, a few small people, there's a lot of taxpayers, and even a lot of landlords that would not agree with that. I want to go back to the fact, you know, this gentleman here, he said that, oh, if we don't build it downtown, we'll push them out and they'll go outside. Well, let them go, let them go. They can go to Hebron, they can go to Delmar, they can go to Fruitland, Pittsville, Willards, let them go. But why let them pick on us and ruin our city, especially downtown? We have beautiful restaurants, bars, nice places. But you look at Baltimore, at one point in time, probably way before I was ever born, it was a proud and beautiful place. And right now, if you go down to Baltimore and look at those buildings, the structure, the architecture are absolutely amazing. But what happened? They built and built and built. And so now, and that's what's going to happen to us, is they're going to build and build and choke us to death, don't smile at me.
Ma'am.
So I beg you, please, don't listen to the developers' greed, listen to us as taxpayers.
Lou. Alex Scott, taxpayer. Been here for forty-four years. I am the owner of The Brick Room, way outside, I'm not trying to plug my podcast. I'm not retired, I work quite a bit, and- I, uh, I work quite a bit and I just had a thirteen day old baby. So it's a lot for me to be here tonight. I'm comfortable bringing my two kids downtown. I love my downtown. Uh, I'm investing in another business right next to it. And I appreciate everything that you guys are doing here tonight. You've taken a beating tonight and I, I don't envy you at all. I, I, I pretty much agree with everything that the, the nice lady from Habitat from Humanity said. Our downtown is ready for this. The infrastructure is there. It's not going to cost us a lot more and it's going to get a lot more customers my way. It's going to get more competition my way too. I understand that because with more people being downtown, there's going to be more businesses that want to open up downtown. Plain and simple. And, you know, this is something that we're ready for and we need to do now because if not now, it's just going to get harder. Then who's going to do it? I mean, these developers have taken a beating too. And, uh, as bad as you. And I, I don't see anybody else stepping up to build. I, I know I can't afford, I, I, I'm general contracting a little cafe and I'd bill off more than I could chew probably, but I'm gonna get it done. When I last spoke, it was a planning and zoning. And I, I, I kind of was sarcastic. And I, I said I opposed all these things and, and really, I, I, I was so appreciative of them. So when you did the, the, this traffic circle and everybody came up here, you know, Bob, God, he poses everything. You know, it's been great. The Ross has been amazing for downtown. Unity Square, thank you for that. It is beautiful and it just, it makes me love bringing my kids down here. This project and others like it are going to make Salisbury great. And when we're talking about housing, affordable housing, we just need more housing. You know, plain and simple. So I, I hope that you consider that. And thank you again for your time. Appreciate you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Mike Dunn, President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee, also resident in the city of Salisbury. I want to thank you for your vote the last time on the first reading of this ordinance, where you passed overwhelmingly this idea that has been talked about since nineteen eighty. And again, I said these comments at Planning and Zoning and at the first reading of this. Since nineteen eighty, four major studies have been done by five different mayors and countless city council folks and many members of the community who volunteered for this. The Greater Salisbury Committee, very proud to say, we've been part of these studies every step of the way. What they all say is the same thing, that we need to bring housing into downtown. Currently, there are two hundred and sixty-eight housing units in downtown Salisbury. If the plan for Lot One occurs, if the plan for Lot Sixteen occurs, and if the plan for Title Health and what they plan to build on the former Daily Times property occurs, that will bring us to a little over five hundred units in and around downtown, which coincidentally is exactly the number of units recommended during the time of Mayor Jim Irtan in the study that occurred in two thousand and twelve. So unlike some of the comments you've heard tonight, we are so in support of this. You all are in a very unique position. You have an opportunity because the people who want to develop our downtown, something that is supported by the Downtown Salisbury Business Alliance, the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, and some of our largest employers, including Purdue Farms, Title Health, they are in support of this. It's worth noting tonight, in a night that has been a little tense, that earlier today, as many of you know, because you were there, the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development and Secretary Jake Day, former Mayor Jake Day, presented to Salisbury University and to this community two million dollars for the design of their Performing Arts Center. It's something that the Greater Salisbury Committee has called the golden ticket. We have been waiting. We have been waiting in downtown Salisbury for the very thing that is going to attract people, allow businesses to thrive and to bring economic development to downtown. And that Performing Arts Center and this, that's before you tonight, to increase density allows us to do that. I encourage you to support this. The Greater Salisbury Committee is in full support of it. We thank you for your time and we thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Bratton, resident of city Salisbury, one of the frequent flyers here. We used to have a saying about that in the guidance office and in the, in the disciplinary, you know, you have your frequent flyers. I guess I'm kind of a, a, a bad guy here. There's also a new show called Matlock. I love it, you know, pay no attention to the old lady in the room because, you know, they don't tend to think we know anything. I'm seventy-three and Ms. Katrina over there has been a friend for many of those years and with my husband as well. I have very little to say tonight because most of you know my point. I think a lot of you have reached out to me. I've, I've had conversations, but not really. I didn't get back to you because Christmas got in the way. But I wanted to. I still have your name and phone numbers. I'm tired, folks. And I know you all are too. The property was built, was purchased, understanding that the density was for forty units per acre. The property was designed, the, some of the first designs that I saw at the Historic Commission were already for almost two hundred and some. There was never a desire to build within the rules, in my opinion, because the immediate thing was go for variance, go for an exception. If we had already been able to build that property at forty units per acre, it'd be over a hundred units, a hundred families would be moving into the downtown corridor. They'd be here. They'd be under construction. There was a beautiful building complex built right down the street from where I live. Actually built under density. I checked with the developer, the owner. There's already families living there. There's cars parked there. People go and come to work. They're housed. Twelve families are already housed. Small, but housed. I, I have fourteen units that I rent in Salisbury. This thing doesn't compete with me on any level. My only interest is in maintaining our Salisbury as a wonderful place to raise families, safe with the infrastructure to depend on, that can carry it through to fruition in the future. Instead of two hundred and twenty units, let's look at a win-win. Let's go down and let's look at getting back to closer to the forty. Let's get the darn thing built. Let's bring people down here. Let's fill the units. Let's get the people in the shops and in the stores and in the businesses and in roadies and everywhere else. And, and still have places for people to park if they want to take a dance lesson at the other end of the city and not have to walk their little children from the mall, from the parking garage all the way almost past the district court building. Let's get it done. But let's do it within the rules that are already there. I thank you for your time and I hope you make a, a good, solid decision tonight.
Thank you.